Welcome, everybody, to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, June 7th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'd stand for that, and follow it up with the invocation by Pastor Andy Kout from the Bellevue Christian Center.
All right, let's pray together. Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity just to be here tonight. We thank you for your great character, your grace, and your mercy. And God, before we begin, we just want to take a moment and just lift up the Stinson family and just, God, as someone who's grown up in Bellevue, we just thank you for this gift that we had with Bob. And we just pray that you would bring comfort to their family over these days and ask that you would just bring peace into their homes. And Father, as we crack into our business for the night, I pray that you would just give wisdom to our leaders. God, we thank you so much for each and every individual who is called upon to lead this city, to be a voice of influence. We just ask that throughout this night, God, this meeting would have your favor on it and that we would experience your grace through each and every decision that's made. Father, we love you and we need you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Andy. Okay, I want to thank you, thanks to Pastor Andy Kout for bringing up, praying for the Stinson family. Bob, and thank you for putting the little memorial here. I think Lisa and Phil and Police Department worked on it. Bob was a lifelong citizen of Bellevue. He was born in 1959 in Denver, moved, the family moved here in 1960. He's graduated from Bellevue East in 1977, served with the public parks for a few years before going on to the Bellevue Police Department and served there for 26 years. Also served on the Bellevue Volunteer Fire Department for 19 of those years. And then ran for City Council in 2018. So, just a great servant to the city of Bellevue. So, on behalf of the entire city of Bellevue, the City Council here, all the employees of the city of Bellevue, myself, I want to extend our gratitude to Linda, Jason, Jen, and the entire Stinson family. So, just wanted to say that. So, thank you. So, we will open up the meeting. I'll call it to order. Shirley, would you take a roll call, please?
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item 5, Approval of Agenda Consent Agenda Claims and Advisory Committee Reports 5A, Approval of the Agenda. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a motion. I'll make a statement. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
And I'd like to move item 12B in front of 12A.
Okay, motion to move 12?
I'll make that as a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch, to move 12B in front of 12A. Any comments or questions on that? Okay, please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
And I have a motion by Cook, second by Preister, to approve the agendas, or the agenda. Any comments or questions on that? And that will be as amended. Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item 5B, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where the item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item 7, Special Presentations. We have none this evening. 8, Organizational Matters, there are none. Item 9, Approved Citizen Communication, we did not receive any. Item 10, Liquor Licenses, 10A, recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the application for Roseland Sales as the new manager for Four Quick Shops, Store 670 at 2103 Capeport Road, Store 675 at 502 West Mission Avenue, Store 688 at 602 Galvin Road, and Store 689 at 4151 Harrison Street. And I will open 10A up for public hearing. Is there anyone here, is the applicant here by chance? Okay, is there anyone here to speak regarding the recommendation to approve the liquor license? Please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak regarding 10A, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the application for Roseland Sales as the new manager for Four Quick Shops, Store 670, 2103 Capeport Road, Store 675, 502 West Mission Ave., Store 688, 602 Galvin Road, and Store 689, 4151 Harrison Street.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item 10B, Recommend Approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the application for Moran's Grill LLC, doing business as Moran's Grill, for a Class CK liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits on and off sale at 3909 Twin Creek Drive, Bellevue, and for Stephen Cronow as manager. And I will open 10B up for public hearing. Is the applicant here? Please come forward, state your name and address, and sign in.
My name is Robert Peterson. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Moran's Grill LLC. I think your packet's complete. This is, they're making the application to move into the Lansky's facility. They're an experienced operator. They've been operating in Papillion. I guess that's all they got.
All right. What's your address, Robert?
14747 California Street, Omaha.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak regarding 10B, the recommendation for Nebraska liquor license? Anyone wanting to speak, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the application of Moran's Grill LLC, DBA Moran's Grill, for a Class CK liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits on and off sale at 3909 Twin Creek Drive, Bellevue, and for Stephen Cronow as manager.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item 11, Ordinances for Adoption, Third Reading, 11A, Ordinance Number 4098, repealing Chapter 14, Section 14-6 pertaining to slaughterhouses, soap factories, feedlots, et cetera. Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4098, an ordinance to repeal Chapter 14, Section 14-6 of the Bellevue Municipal Code regarding slaughterhouses, soap factories, feedlots, et cetera, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance Number 4098.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item 12B, as amended, ordinance Number 4100, request to rezone lots 192 through 266 and Outlot 1, Lakewood West, being a plating of Tax Lot 14 located in the southwest quarter of Section 31, Township 14 North, range 13 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and a replat of Outlot H, Lakewood West, from AG and RS-72 to RG-50 for the purpose of single-family residential development. Applicant Woodsonia Real Estate, Inc., general location, 11715 South 60th Street. And Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4100, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of Ordinance 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 11715 South 60th Street, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. And I will open up 12B for public hearing. And I'll start with the Woodsonia Real Estate's representative.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. With me tonight is Brad Hyke of TD2, the consulting engineers on this particular project. I appreciate you moving me up on the agenda, so thank you for that. Pretty simple matter. It's a 20-acre development just west of the Lakewood West development that is really the Phase 1 portion of this development. This is the Phase 2 development. Again, there's 75 lots. It's really the only thing to note, I think, is the access to this particular development, these 75 lots, which is from the north when and if the property to the north develops, there will be no access onto 60th Street, direct access onto 60th Street, and there will be no direct access onto Schramm Road either. So, the access will be through the existing platted Lakewood West development to the east, and then also to the north when that property gets developed. We are with this particular plat dedicating 50 feet of right-of-way at no cost of Schramm Road, the future Schramm Road, which no one really knows when that's actually going to occur as far as the construction of it. And then we have agreed, and we're in negotiations with Sarpy County regarding a contribution financially to 60th Street. So, this is, again, the preliminary plat. There's still time to work through all of those issues, but otherwise, pretty straightforward development. The anticipated price of the homes here is anywhere between $350,000 and $400,000 per home. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions now for Mr. Jovan? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak regarding 12B? Please come forward. And we have a couple of public hearings this evening. If you speak, we'll have a five-minute time limit on that. And please announce your name, address, and sign in when you get to the podium. Anybody wanting to speak regarding 12B? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. That third reading will be June 21st, 2022, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. And I will go to 12B1, request to preliminary plat lots 192 through 266 and Outlot 1, Lakewood West. And there's no action required on that one. Okay, I'll take us to item 12A, ordinance Number 4099, request to rezone lots 1 through 9, Fontanel Hills Estates, being a replat of Lot 1, Fontanel replat 8 and lots 12, 13, 16, 17, 19, 55A, 233, and 234, Fontanel, and half of vacated Laurel Lane from RS120PS to RE for the purpose of single-family residential development. Applicant Hawkins and Strom Holdings LLC, general location, Martin Drive and Ridgewood Drive, Martin Drive and Ridgewood Court. Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
Yes, ordinance Number 4099, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of Ordinance 3619, by changing the zone classification of land at or about Martin Drive and Ridgewood Drive and Martin Drive and Ridgewood Court, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. I'll open up 12A for public hearing now. If the applicant's here, I'll let them talk first, or if they don't have to. But I'm going to open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, come forward, state your name, address, and sign in, please.
Mary Hawkins, 414 Greenbrier Court, Bellevue. We represent the owners of the golf course. And the golf course has run for a number of years, but it's pretty much hit its end of life. Probably a few years ago, it hit its end of life, but we did manage with neighborhood support to keep it open. My husband and I bought the portions that we had in 2009 and ran it as a private course for a number of years. In December, this past December, we sent notices out to all of the residents that some of the work that was done to keep the golf course alive was really by volunteers. And that volunteer staff had, for a number of reasons, had declined to one person. So, we sent out notices telling people that if we wanted to keep the golf course open, that we needed at least 100 members. There's quite a large number of houses in Fontanel Hills. We had just under 50 residents who are willing to contribute money and membership to keep the golf course alive. That was both some golfers and some non-golfers who just enjoyed the green space and wanted to walk. But it became untenable for us to keep it going after January, when we didn't have additional members. So, we closed the golf course for, and that was actually a year ago, we closed the golf course as a golf course and kept it alive. We've been mowing it, maintaining it, taxes, et cetera. But now, it's time to shift it into residential lots. We've kept the lots, lot numbers very small. There are estate lots, anywhere from a couple of acres up to a little bit over five acres. And we felt it's a best compromise that we can make on the land to keep it cared for and to keep people in the, you know, sponsorship, stewardship of the land, and also then hopefully to build additional nice homes in that area. So, that's the request from the applicants, is to rezone it into estate lots. That does not include the entire golf course. Some of it is still to be decided what we do, but we're very conscious members of the neighborhood and understand, understand the desire of people to have it as a green space. But that's just not possible going forward. So, we think this is a best alternative we could come up with.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Hawkins? Councilwoman Welch?
Mary, don't go too far. On these lots, do you have any idea what they're, what they're going to be priced at? Any idea?
I've looked at with MP Dodge because two or three things. One, it's not my great business. I'm not a real estate person. Two, I think right now, economic, economics are changing, and so that needs to be taken into account with the pricing. We had suggested to MP Dodge that they look at around $35,000, $30,000, $35,000 to $40,000 in that range, an acre, which it doesn't parcel out to exact acres, so they'll be doing some of that. But we'll look for their guidance, because I do think getting them under private ownership will be valuable to the area.
Right. And understand that whatever the purchase price, statistically, whatever the purchase price of the lot is, the houses are anywhere from four to five times that in the building. And I do know of someone that recently bought a lot, an acre lot, and it was $225,000. So...
That's high.
It is, but, you know, so that was one of the reasons I was asking, because it's, you know, for the residents to know if we do pass this, that, you know, it's not going to be starter homes that are put in this. They're going to be well-established homes. And I also remember from the Planning Commission, you said you and all your partners went to the planning director and said, "We live here. What's our best way that we can do this to be good stewards of the, of the neighborhood?" And so, I appreciate you putting a lot of thought into this, because Fontanel Hills has always been the regency of our area, and it sounds like you really wanted to do the best you could with, with what you had at the moment.
Yes, thanks, Kathy. And I have to say that the planning department was really helpful, because we went back and forth with lots of ideas. And poor Tammy, she probably like feels like I'm on auto dial, but really trying to understand. We did, we paid for a survey or a study, I would say, with Olson and Associates on the sewer to understand what was the impact overall. And got a lot of help from the city and came up with this as, I think, the best alternative for the land. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Public hearing is open, so if anyone would like to come forward, please come to the podium, state your name, your address. And if you can limit your comments to five minutes, that would be perfect.
Okay. Sue Olson, Mandler. 515 Ridgewood Drive, Bellevue. I haven't seen anything about the traffic. Where the roads are going to run, and how much, did they do a survey, how much extra traffic would go through the neighborhood? That sort of thing. I haven't seen anything like that. All I got was a map like that and couldn't quite see about traffic, et cetera.
Okay, I could let Tammy Palm address that. If you just kind of give just a short scenario on how this works.
Sure. So, I have the plat up on the screen. There's nine residential lots proposed. Lots 1 and 2 are down to the south. They would have, each have a private drive, one off Greenbrier, one off Martin. Lots 3 and 4 would also be serviced by private drives. And so, one of those would be off of Martin, one of those would be off of Ridgewood. Same with Lot 5, would have a private driveway off of Martin. For Lot 6, 7, 8, and 9, a private street is proposed. That street would be right here, be called Dagmar Court. That would come off of Martin Drive. As a private street, it would be the responsibility of the developer or an HOA, but it would be a private street. With only nine acreage lots, the traffic impact, staff believes, would be very minimal. So, it wouldn't increase the amount of traffic to an extent that would be concerning to staff with only nine residential lots.
Yeah, if you have to come to the podium, because we're being recorded here. Thank you.
The, the lots you're speaking about, and the, but there's future plans, right?
The plans, there's a whole separate process. When the, when the developer comes in with their actual layouts and streets, and those all have to be approved by fire and, and so forth, correct, Tammy?
Yes, correct. This is the plat that City Council is voting on now. If these were ever to be subdivided again, they would go through the same process. So, it'd go through the same public hearing process. So, in front of City Council is only these nine lots.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Rich Casey, 205 Forest Drive, Bellevue. This evening, as the Fontanel Hills Homeowners Association President, representing the neighborhood that will be most directly affected by this action this evening, and on behalf of the Board of Directors, I'd like to offer our support for the requested rezoning action that's before you this evening. And I will admit, we'll say that it's not a unanimous decision among all homeowners. Clearly, there are some folks that would rather not see this happen, but you may hear some of that this evening. However, the Board of Directors believe that a majority of the homeowners would agree that we owe a tremendous amount of gratitude to Jim and Mary Hawkins and the other homeowners for, number one, keeping the golf course open when it was doomed to close many years ago, as Mary stated, but also electing to rezone this as residential estates. So, the least dense possible zoning other than ag that could have went in here. The alternative would have been leaving it as RS120 and potentially having many more homes built on the golf course. So, this is the best situation that we could hope for. But of course, we would all love to continue having a golf course. We'd love to continue having the green space that we've enjoyed for so many years. However, we also understand it's unrealistic to, to burden the current owners to, to provide that for the homeowners at their expense and to maintain those properties for the benefit and enjoyment of the current homeowners. So, our hope is that if and when the building process starts on these properties, if that is to happen, that the, the city will work with the builders to ensure minimum impact to the current homeowners and ultimately enhance the beautiful neighborhood of Fontanel Hills. So, again, on behalf of the Fontanel Hills Homeowners Association, we are in support of the action tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Any questions? Councilwoman Welch?
So, Rich, do you know if there are going to be any covenants or anything that says if somebody buys it, they have to build on it?
I'm not aware of that.
So, there is a possibility that if you are a homeowner, and this is behind you, you and your three homeowners could possibly get together and buy it. Is that possible? Tammy, maybe? Rich?
That would be possible, of course. That would be up to the current owners and who they decide to sell to. But yes, you know, if this plat is approved and if these lots hit the market, then, you know, potentially, people could come together to buy a lot and keep it open space.
And I think you're going to hear that tonight, some folks who have some different ideas on how to purchase and protect that property as a green space. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Heather Vickers. I am at 520 Laurel Drive. I would like you to deny this petition for a few reasons. One is that while it was designed to be a green space when this subdivision was made, but also the people who live there expect it to stay a green space. We would prefer to work with the current owners to try to buy it separately, so without your help. But also, none of us have seen any information other than what was sent out a month ago or so, and would like a little bit more time before you make your final decision to work with the current owners. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Please come forward. Go ahead and come on.
Sorry, I'm still writing.
Hey, Mayor, hi. Council, thanks for letting me speak tonight. Appreciate it. My name's John Roberts. I'm at 911 Bayberry Drive, and I am smack up against Lot 1. I'm an active-duty member on the base here, but we fell in love with the area. We bought the house here, and I'm going to retire. We plan on making this our home forever. So, it came to my attention once we got there that Jim, and Gary, them, has been maintaining this lot basically for free, letting people walk on, use it for the last year that I've been here, and a little bit longer. So, I appreciate that. In fact, a tree was about use it for the last year that I've been here and a little bit longer, so I appreciate that. In fact, a tree was about to fall down in my backyard. I thought it was my tree and if it was the, it was a golf course tree and Jim promptly came out and had it cut down, so it didn't cause any damage to my house, so I'm appreciative of that. I'll just officially, I'm in favor of it becoming an estate lot. Uh, just because as a military person, I like to buy down risk as fast as I can, and I don't want to have to come back here every two years and reargue what might be built on there again. Um, I do like the idea of the neighbors getting together and buying it. I've already done all the homework. I have handouts. We could, I could form an LLC in about two weeks and we could buy it, and if enough people chip in, it's really not that all expensive, and we can make a covenant and just keep it green forever. That's the plan. So if anybody wants to do that, um, I have handouts. Come, come get to me. But I also realize that maybe you couldn't get a hundred people to keep it a golf course, so if I don't get enough participation and I can't get enough uh, support to generate it, then the next best thing is it becomes an estate lot and that minimizes impact in my backyard. Uh, I, as you, if you haven't looked at your property lines though, there's a good chance that that golf course officially comes a lot closer to your backyard and your porch than you think it did. So that's something to consider, and I'll just remind everybody that if you've lived here for fifteen or more years, your house is probably worth double than what it was fifteen, twenty years ago. Guaranteed it's worth double. Even if you bought a year ago, it's probably fifteen, twenty thousand dollars more, so an eight to ten thousand dollar uh, investment to own, be a co-owner of land behind you, to me is not a bad deal. And it's something that it's there forever. You're not, you're not paying for a membership. You can own it. If you have any questions, I don't want to take up too much time, but um, um, again, I have all the contacts. If you want to repeat what I'm doing on other lots, I've got, I've got contacts here. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Uh, I'm Betsy Bush Kemper at five fourteen Laurel Drive, and I'm not going to ask for a, you know, for you not to vote on this proposal or to turn it down, but only to delay it for a little while because of John's new information that this is sort of a, we've, suddenly we've got a game changer, sort of a new out-of-the-box plan that could potentially be a much better alternative than estate lots, and very little time to explore this. Um, you know, according even to, to Rich Casey, everybody, you know, in the neighborhood kind of wanted to preserve the green space. That was, that was the goal. Um, and we'd very much like to, to do that, but uh, unfortunately, the time has, is, is running out. Um, even though we, uh, I, you know, the neighborhood just received notice of this whole rezoning thing just less than two months ago. And at the uh, public hearing of, with the commission in this room a few weeks ago, there was standing room only full of, you know, concerned neighbors who had just heard about this and weren't even aware that, you know, they, that they, they faced the potential loss of, of what they thought was, you know, the green space that everybody had. And their, uh, you know, their concerns and comments were met with a general consensus that although everybody would prefer, prefer to keep this a green space, that it was just not compatible with the owner's legitimate legal right to sell their property at a profit and, and, and that everybody really appreciated what the previous owners had done and their efforts to maintain the golf course and then to maintain the green space until it just became impossible anymore. But I think there's a better alternative for them and for everybody with John's plan. And uh, and instead of, uh, I think, you know, and that the proposed rezoning request for estate lots, uh, instead of the best of the bad alternatives, all of a sudden there is a better alternative and uh, what uh, what I'd like somehow to do is, you know, I mean, suddenly this, this new development of the estate lot homes wasn't the only or the least bad alternative. It is this potentially better one. And it uh, and John Roberts has, you know, has addressed what he's going to do. But uh, basically it is a plan for him to buy lot one along with the affected neighbors to collectively get the entire lot for a fair market price. And uh, and it's, it's happening. He's, 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 you know, he's setting up his corporation to do this. And I think it's a wonderful new out-of-the-box idea. And now that John has laid the, laid groundwork for this, this plan can easily be replicated by owners uh, of the other proposed, by owners and neighbors near the other proposed lots, that they can do the same thing to collectively buy the lot nearest them or work together to consolidate and buy more, uh, more lots. So in just this last month, neighbors in other areas are looking at doing this. In fact, just in the last week, we only knew about this last week when uh, Mr. Casey sent an email out with, with John's proposal. And if this can be organized and, and implemented in the other neighborhoods, it would become the better alternative uh, both for Fountain Hill Hills and for the current golf course owners and I think for the city of Bellevue. It's a win-win situation that would preserve, you know, sort of what everybody considers, the precious green space, the views, the property values, the recreation area and the wildlife habitat that just makes this part of Bellevue so special. It would also allow the current owners to accomplish their goal of selling this, their, their, their property at a fair market price. Yeah, that they, and that the same price they would have gotten if the lots were not developed and sold into estate homes. And all the costs and liabilities and of development and building new streets on difficult terrain that's accessible to fire trucks and rescue squads, the earth moving, the tree cutting, the utility lines, the sewer and drainage infrastructure, all those issues that will cause headache and liabilities and potential problems uh, for the city are also eliminated or greatly reduced uh, by this new plan to maintain the area just simply as a green space. And last but not least, I think the rezoning may not even be required if the neighbors can reach this mutually acceptable, acceptable agreement with the golf course owners to buy the property on the same basis as it currently exists. In which case there may be no need for rezoning at all, or possibly a rezoning to a green space or to recreational area or to something else, which would be a win-win po- potential for everybody. Uh, the golf course owners who have their, their right to, a desire to sell their land for the surrounding neighborhood to preserve and protect their precious green space and for the city of Bellevue to have this large, beautiful area.
I gotta have you wrap it up here.
Okay, I'm going into a real quick conclusion, but uh, at this, you know, the city of Bellevue could still have the green space and the wildlife habitat at virtually no cost to the city and no concerns for potential safety and liability problems that the new homes and roads and infrastructure would entail. So in a very quick conclusion, I and a lot of the other Fountain Hill homeowners are asking just if we can just table this vote for a month or two to allow time for the neighborhood to get together. They've only just heard about this in the last week and they can get together to replicate or uh, come to another agreement with the owners for a new option that could be better for everybody. And perhaps, maybe it won't happen, or in which case the worst thing is that the council vote is delayed for a month or two, but isn't that worth a chance to, for a potentially much better thing to happen? And so I don't think it's too much to ask for just a short time to reconsider what could be a much better long-term plan and for the better of good of all. Thank you so much.
I need you to, I need you to sign in as well.
I will do that.
And then if there's anybody else, go ahead and come up. Uh, I've heard a couple, um, just while we're waiting there, um, I heard a couple times mention that maybe some more time. There is two more weeks before the final reading comes, so there's two weeks there. Uh, the owner has to get it on the market. Um, you know, they're entitled to a fair market price and I think you guys are talking about a fair market price anyway, so I think there is some time to work something out whether this gets, goes through in two weeks or, or um, not. Uh, you can always write an offer subject to and uh, and negotiate with them, but not sure that the answer is putting it off one or two more months, so go ahead.
Um, Suzie Lewis, five oh four Ridgewood Drive. Um, thanks, thanks for your time. I, I just want to thank Betsy and all the other neighbors. Um, also a huge thank you to the property owners for upkeeping the golf course. I do feel, um, speaking on behalf of every neighbor that I have spoken to, nobody was like, yes, let's build estates. Not one single person, so, um, I don't think that it's a contemptuous situation, however, at all. Everyone I, I believe really understands that the, the owners, um, don't want to continue to, continue to upkeep things. Um, the responsibility, the taxes they're paying. However, I, I learned a lot. I, I was able to talk with Councilman Priester earlier. Um, I, I work in conservation, so of course the green space is important to me, but everybody has their own reality. And so certainly we under, as the neighborhood, uh, we understand the reality of these, these property owners wanting to sell the land, but it, it feels a bit like it was kept kind of secret. Like who are, who do we talk to? Like, how do we find out if this is even a possibility? So um, I just want to share like, I, I today had a, a wonderful conversation with the owner of the lots that kind of are in my neck of the woods. And um, we're hoping to also, um, we're, we're already in the process following John Roberts' plan to form a neighborhood LLC um, to purchase the, the plots with our, with our neighborhood and um, to keep it as a green space, so, um, yeah, thank you. Thank you for listening. Um, I'm not sure, uh, the re- the rezoning, I mean, I'm just kind of learning everything. Uh, this is a wonderful uh, chance to get to know my neighbors, to learn about city government, uh, to become active. And um, yeah, I'm learning a lot. I, I run a nonprofit, so I know uh, what happens, you know, how to become incorporated. I feel like we could do the, the LLC and um, the only thing I, I, I wish for is that there could have been like some more open communications at the beginning between, you know, the owners and the, the neighbors, um, because I feel like it is a win-win situation. Like I understand that they want to um, relinquish the responsibilities, get this fair market for the, the property that they have. And the neighbors want to keep it green space, so I feel like there is a way for everyone to get that if we just like sat down together at the table. So um, I appreciate very much like the time, um, of, of the owner of, of, of the lots that I spoke with today. Um, and also for the, the owners who previously upkept that, that green space. It's, it's a really unique area. Thank you.
Thank you.
I signed that paper. Do I need to sign this one?
No, not if you sign that one.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Still need your name and address, though.
Oh, Michael Kilburn, nine zero nine Ridgewood Court. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me be here and uh, city council members. Um, Bob Stinson, rest in peace. Uh, I, I got to meet Bob Stinson two years ago. Uh, my address at uh, one four zero five Casio Drive, and uh, he knocked on my house and uh, wanted to tell me his story and I fell in love with him, so. Um, I remember uh, waving for him at Fountain Hill Forest where I voted, so I, I, rest in peace, Bob. But, all right, so lot nine there. I live right at the peak of it. If you were to finish that triangle off, right? I live right there at the peak of lot nine, and uh, I love that property. Absolutely love it. My wife and I moved in there two years ago and uh, that's become home for us. So if you just go off that uh, flat of the triangle, we have that beautiful space that uh, this gentleman right here owns. Thank you, Gary. Gary owns that. Uh, Gary's a good guy. So uh, Gary has given us that space and uh, I love it. Um, again, we've lived there for two years and uh, we used to live at one four zero five Casio Drive and uh, my son came to us a few years ago and said, I want more space. I want more green space, right? We had a four-wheeler at the time. Said, I want a space to live and, and be. So he moved into Fountain Hill Forest and we uh, just happened to get this property at nine zero nine, and uh, we met Gary at the same time. This guy right here, he's very shy. He's not really shy, actually. That's the funny thing. Guys, come on, this is like supposed to be a fun meeting. Um, so we met Gary and Gary gave us a place to be in that green space and uh, my son, who at the time was uh, fourteen, was going through a lot and ended up in a lot of uh, very bad uh, mental health states. Went through a lot of things. And uh, since we moved to that property, he got to expand upon the things that he loved. And he got to be out in nature and he got to get out in those green spaces and, and Gary, which again, I keep referencing his name, he's a good guy. I care what anybody says. A good guy, Gary.
We all know Gary, so.
Okay.
Not just kidding.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Um, gave us a place for my son to get out and uh, ride. Um, and he, my son basically went from a really bad place to a really good place. So I really connected to Fountain Hill Forest as a, as a piece of land really quick. And again, my wife and I are pretty young homeowners in the Fountain Hill Forest area. And uh, it was really hard to connect to Fountain Hill Forest initially because, um, again, we're a young family. Um, I'm thirty-one, and the average age in Fountain Hill Forest is probably
Better watch it.
I don't know, Mr. Mayor. I don't know the average age.
I wouldn't say it.
I don't want to say it. So um, it, it was hard to find that place as home, but we found it as home pretty quick. Um, and I love the green space that we have behind our house, again, right off that peak of lot nine. Um, so I'm not here to say that I don't agree with what, what, what is going on. I actually agree with what is going on. I agree that the people that own this land want to move on from their aspects of their life and they want to get rid of this property, right? There's nothing wrong with that. Right? They own something they don't want anymore. That's cool, right? But now there's a bunch of people maybe in this room that want that. So I'm saying maybe we just give them time to figure out how to do it and give those people time to figure that out because it has meant a lot to me. Again, right off the peak of that little triangle off of lot nine that Gary has given me, it has meant a lot to my family, so. That's all I'm saying is give us time to figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey folks, my name's John Sprowl. Sorry for clearing my voice into the microphone. Um, I live on seven oh one Martin Drive and so uh, lot two, um, is there, and I think right at the little short curving end of it maybe. Um, yeah, just straight east of where your, your cursor is, um, to the, down, anyway. I live right there near um, lot two and I think it's proposed that there'd be tr- private access somewhere in there. Um, we purchased our home about a year ago. Um, we paid uh, twenty thousand dollars over the asking price, um, and guaranteed covering the appraisal gap, and the biggest factor in that was the green space for us. And so it's really, it's disappointing, and, and like others have expressed, I do appreciate what the owners have done, you know, to, to maintain it and to let the neighborhood walk through it. And, and I totally acknowledge their right to need to move on if they need to move on, and so I, um, I however, like some folks have expressed, kind of, um, not knowing my neighbors, I'm sorry that I don't know a lot of you, um, but I hope we can meet. Um, I, I, I would um, propose a, a vote also, I'm, I'm, I'm not voting, but I would urge the council to consider delaying. Um, and for a different reason, um, it sounds like there's some thoughts about making a purchase. Um, and I think that in the real estate climate, that's going to become untenable possibly um, because of what the ability of, I'm, this isn't my thought, I'm just now reflecting on what's been said. I would be concerned if, if it just goes up on the open market that there's a bidding, you know, that escalates. So that's, that's a concern, but my, my real concern is, um, um, if, if, if really estate lots is the priority and keeping as much space in large homes, I'm okay with that if, you know, if there's nice homes built there and my home value goes up, I can't begrudge the owners, but if they're trying to um, maintain as much space and large estate lots, why not attach covenants and restrictions to the plat? Or I don't know exactly how that works in, in Nebraska, but in other states where I've experienced in real estate, you attach covenants and restrictions to the plat and you say, these are the minimum home values that can be built here. Um, these are the mid, um, you can make limits about tree removal. I'm concerned that somebody's going to come in and clear out the whole wall of trees that's right in front of my house. But that can be addressed in covenants and restrictions. And so there can be, the, the owners could, and, and correct me, the council should correct me if I'm wrong, but with covenants and restrictions, the owners could move forward with some more guarantees to the, to the homeowners that they're leaving behind that we can do as much as we can. I'm very worried for lot two that some developer's going to snatch it up. Well over half of the real estate's purchased by investors right now. Some developer's going to snatch it up and I'm going to be here with another proposal subdividing lot two into five lots or, because it's five acres, right? And if it's estate zoning, we could have a whole driveway in front of my house in five lots and my value hasn't necessarily gone up at that point. And so I think that there are things that the council and the owners might be able to do to guarantee that we can move forward and actually have a plan that looks like this in perpetuity that is a benefit to the value of the neighborhood and to the value of the homes that guarantees that there's not going to be mass tree removal and streets everywhere and, and further subdivision. So if that's really a priority of the owners, they're leaving, that, that's what they can do now. And so I would So if that's really a priority of the owners, they're leaving, that that's what they can do now. And so I would um. I would, I would ask if if I'm off base with that, if the council could inform me and the 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 va- what what is the the the? What is the downside to attaching additional stipulations to these developments that? That help the the community have more guarantees about what it's gonna look like in five years? Thank you.
Thank you. And uh, while we're waiting on the next person, I have Tammy address, um. Is there a Alaska question, I guess? Is there a subdivision agreement on this or since it's in the city, is it just fall under RE?
There is no, it's not an SID, so there's no subdivision agreement. Um, you know, typically in this situation, it is a preliminary plat, but. It's only nine lots, so we usually don't enter into any any and we don't typically enter into any type of agreement. Unless there is a lot of infrastructure need or there would be um. Costs involved such as new streets, things of that nature. With this plat, the only street we have is a private drive. That or private street that's proposed, so there isn't an agreement proposed at this time.
Okay, so as it stands, somebody could put, come in, put a thousand square foot ranch, two car garage on there, no?
It would be, it would go under our zoning regulations unless the developers put in some type of covenant. Or the, you know, new owners put in some type of covenant, then that. The city doesn't enforce covenants, but a neighborhood or an association could have covenants which are more restrictive than what the city has.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sheila Norton. I'm a thirty-two um, year resident at three zero nine Greenbrier Court. And that's immediately adjacent to Lot One. We actually have a very long property line. Um, along the uh, southwest corner of Lot One and uh. I'm actually in favor of of it becoming estate lots. I think that that's the safest. Uh, most assured way that the green space is going to be maintained, especially if we. Rather than just having, you know, if there is no street going through, there is, right now, there's just planned to have a driveway for each of the. The four point two and the five acre lots, one and two, that are being proposed for the estate lots. So um. Jim Hawkins and his associates associates have been very good. Um, keepers of of the green space and and uh, prior to. Uh, we we were members of the golf course um, and contributed, made our our payments each month, even though we're not. Our each year, even though we're not golfers and we maintained it as a green space. And I think that uh, I wish. People who wanna uh, form an LLC, I wish them well and I hope that it turns out, but I don't really. See unless I'm mistaken that why that would preclude it being replotted and to estates. Um, maybe Tammy or somebody could tell me, is there? Uh, if they did get voted to become um, estate estate lots, is it, it still could become an LLC, couldn't it?
That's correct. I I guess also in my opinion, it's better for the neighborhood if it is rezoned to residential estates. Under the current zoning, the RS one twenty, it's a minimum lot size of twelve thousand square feet. So you know, you could have between three to four lots, an acre versus if it's residential estates, that's minimum one acre lots. Um, so that's far less dense than what it's currently zoned.
Right. So I I just wanna just say that I I would not, I would. I would think that going to the the replot would be the best possible way and I think that. People's uh, false expectations that it would become a green space. It's it's like. It's been this way for, um, it's anybody who's been there for even. Three, five, ten years, you you have to realize that, I mean, that. There were s- there were there were signs up in the area, even though Jim was very. Generous in in allowing people to walk and and do whatever they were doing in there, I mean, beyond, in a reasonable amount. Um, of usage, but there were signs that said, hey, this is private property. And I don't know, I doubt that he was the one who took those signs down, so. Um, and it's always been very peaceful and there's never been, I've never had any kinda problems with. When I was walking in the in the area, so. Just wanted to let you know, that's my feelings.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want, anybody else wanting to speak, please come forward. Does council have any questions for anybody in the audience before I close the public hearing? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. You know, this is government work and people coming here and being heard before a decision is made and this. It's nice to see the people that are here tonight. And to the owners, I I know it's more, I think there's other owners besides the Hawkins. But for what they've done pa- the past several years, many of you complimented them. On what they've done and I think that's been outstanding that they took not only the cost but the time and effort to do that. Um. I sorta got more something towards maybe Tammy. Tammy, um, and. Not not, I don't think it was being said negative, I just wanna make sure that uh, nothing's secret. I mean, I don't know how we notify people. Do we put signs or do we send letters to people? That are within so many feet of a property?
We do all of that, so um, statutorily, we're, we are required um, ten days prior to the hearing to send. Uh, notices out. Um, basically, we are required to do a legal ad in the newspaper, which we do. And then we are required to do one of two other things, either post signs on the property or send notices out to property owners within three hundred feet. We actually do all three of those things. Um. Again, statutorily, it's a ten day notice. We usually try to send them out at least two to two and a half weeks ahead of time, so people are aware of it. Um, but those notices go out and that legal ad happens um, prior to each public hearing, so any public hearing before planning commission and also. Any public hearing before city council.
Okay, and then I I think there was some great ideas, one of the um. Uh, I can't remember his name. Uh, but was talking about some con- uh, John, I think was, conditions, covenants. I didn't quite understand what you're trying to say, but.
John Sprawl.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Sprawl.
Okay, um. They they they're could be an HO, I know there's one already in 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 Fontanel Hills, but there could be an HOA specifically for these lots. With requirements and how far can they go with restrictions? Uh, how would it be enforced and is it stuff that would have to be maybe set? And put on the deed on the property, out at Sarpy, I mean, what can they, I mean, to say an HOA and let them enforce something?
An HOA would have to be formed. Um, typically what happens is in order for a covenant to be enforced, it has to be. Um, signed and recorded with the registered deeds office, so it has to be current with the registered deeds office and be filed. Um, and then obviously you have to have a board or you have to have some sort of governing body to enforce that. Um, so typically an HOA is going to rely on dues from its membership. In order to maintain and enforce its restrictive covenants and to perform maintenance.
But i- it could go as far as as maybe designating these lots could not be broken up more.
A an owner could do that, yes. Um, again, you know, that could all, that would all be done outside of the realm of the city's scope. Um, that's something that could be done in the form of restricted covenants by current owners, future or owners, whatever the case may be. And then it would be up to those owners to enforce those restrictions.
And I just wanted to make sure, I thought, great idea, a a good thought, you know, I mean, a lot of good ideas tonight, but I just wanted. The city doesn't do this. And I I didn't want someone to think that, hey, we're gonna call our city attorney tomorrow morning and.
No, this is, this is private property, so um, it's private property. This is something that would have to be done, any kind of restrictive covenant. Any type of, you know, LLC, any of that would have to be done by a current or future owner, so that would be, again, that wouldn't be the city's responsibility. It would be whoever owns the property.
Right, okay, and thanks for everybody coming out tonight. Thank you.
Councilwoman Walsh?
So I'm not sure if this question goes to Bree or Tammy. What is the benefit of us delaying this vote?
And just reviewing, you know, everything before planning and tonight and from staff comments. Um, there's really not a benefit to delaying the vote. Um, essentially, right now you have three larger parcels. You have one that is um, about six acres, that top one. You have one that's almost twelve acres, the side one, and then you have one that's like nine acres, that bottom one. Um, uh, there's really no benefit in delaying the vote. All this is doing is rezoning it. And then doing the preliminary plat to break these into smaller lots.
So that doesn't stop the homeowners from buying the property? It doesn't stop them from forming the LLC? It doesn't stop them from making a bid? Doesn't stop them from doing any of those types of things?
Correct, and it actually will, it it could make it more manageable, because you're taking these larger acre sections. And you're breaking it down into smaller manageable lots. That are more adjacent to maybe the homeowners on Lot One wanna purchase Lot One through an LLC instead of purchasing the whole, you know. Twelve acres, so it actually makes it more manageable. And then like Tammy said, um, it reduces. The density of what could come in if it remains in its current zoning. So there's nothing to, in in my opinion, that would prevent us from moving forward with this. Or hinder their ability to move forward with their plans in conjunction with this being approved.
So if the neighbors got together and formed the LLC and they. Excuse me, made an offer on the property, the offer's accepted, let's say of Lot One hypothetically. Then they could create the covenants there that would say. You can't build on it or we can't sell it, or I mean, they could, they could create all their own rules with regards to that. For the future use of that, correct?
Yes, they could.
And that's not?
Those are all things that the city wouldn't partake in either way.
Perfect.
And they can negotiate the terms without having the LLC at this time. Um, they can always name the buyer. Later, so that you can start negotiating at any time with them, so.
Also, I'd point something else out and um, we kinda talked about this at planning commission. I realized the neighbors first got notified, it was about mid-April, because. The first public hearing was April twenty-eighth in front of the planning commission. Um, this is only preliminary plat and zoning, so. The owners will come back through with a final plat. That hasn't happened yet. So even though the vote on this would happen at the next city council meeting. It's still likely to be another forty-five days or more, depending on when the owners come in with that final plat, so. There's, there's a number of months that are gonna pass between when the neighbors were first notified to when this is a done deal and voted on.
And when they do that final plat, do they come back through the planning commission and then back to?
Correct, although I will say if the preliminary plat is approved, the final plat is basically a formality. Um, at that point, city council would have to approve it as long as it conform with the preliminary plat. I'm just pointing it out because from a timing perspective. Um, that still allows neighbors more time to speak with the owners.
Councilman Priester?
Thank you, Mayor. I would echo the congratulations and the thank you to everybody that came out tonight. There's nothing like a rezoning or a development going right next door to bring people out and get civic lessons. So congratulations on being here, but more so, I appreciate the creativity, Mr. Roberts. Nicely done, looking into it, checking, finding options. Personally, I always prefer to have developers and residents get together and try to come to some agreement. In between the public hearing or before or after. And it sounds like you're working well together, you've got an organization, you got the HOA. And it's been functioning, so congratulations and thank you for being engaged. I I've heard a lot of things and I'm encouraged by it. I'm wondering if the Hawkins and the owners. Are open to these suggestions and if they're willing to even consider selling to the neighbors. I heard. They're willing to do market value and on the open market, so it sounds like that. Uh, if they are, it sounds like there's plenty of time to move ahead with it, so. If Mary or Jim would like to comment, I'd sure like to hear your thought. If not, I respect your opinion.
Thought you were flipping over it.
Again, Mary Hawkins, I don't know that my address is needed. I think that uh, the comments that your city attorney made. We have looked at this for a number of years and I really do think that. Breaking the parcels into those reasonable lots is much more amenable to trying to form an LLC. Because otherwise it's all one. You you're dealing with one huge um, lot if you don't do that and you're still gonna end up back. Going through to get it replatted, cause I don't think there's a single LLC. That wants to manage all of the acres that we've talked about. We don't, honestly. If neighbors wanna buy it, that's great. I have no problem with that. We'll we'll let. I don't wanna negotiate it. I will be honest with you. I'm gonna let MB Dodge handle that, but. We're happy for anyone who wants to purchase the lots and and do what they want with it, but. I totally agree and I think that's hard for people to get their heads around is, you know, the size that you're talking about and the breakdown. And if if somebody wants to buy, for example, two of the contiguous lots, that's fine. There's. I don't think any of us are are um, trying to manage the who buys it issue. And we live there too and have for since nineteen ninety-three in Fontanel Hills, so we're totally in favor of. Um, trying to preserve the neighborhood. I do think that there's. Um, when I, I had to pick something up at home today and I drove by and Jim was out mowing. I think that there's a little bit of um. A lack of understanding about what it really takes to keep up twenty-eight some acres of land in a area where you've got um. Hills and trees and older trees and animals and you name it. But I don't think that the estate lots will impact the wildlife. I think that it will make it easier if they wanna do LLCs. To not deal with the twenty-eight full acres and it will stop them having to come back through. The planning department to to change zoning. The other thing that we didn't talk too much about this is. Right now, it's actually pulling the land together into, otherwise you've got more pieces. You can see some smaller. Lots in there. Those are now pulled in together. It actually creates some, um, what do you call it? Easier management and negotiation for the for the property. Um, those are at the bottom. I think Tammy was pointing to those. And there's a little corner down by the Nortons, so those things now all come together, make it easier. Jim?
Yeah, Jim Hawkins, um. This, what John is recommending, we did fifteen years ago. Um, Bob Hu- Bob and Mary Ellen Huck, um, myself, Mary and uh. And and Gary, uh, Renner and Ed Quis, we all got together. And we decided to uh, keep the golf course going. So what they're describing now, we did fifteen years ago. It's just a little bit different form. Um, we are. The golf course closed, this is the third summer, so this is the third summer. That we're maintaining this as a green space and we make sure that the paths are mowed and all that, so people are. People can walk and uh, in all of that. If if I was a homeowner in the hills three years ago and the course had closed. I'd have start, I would have started making my plans then. So this is not new, this is three years old. Also, we had the first meeting, the first letters went out. You said uh, mid-April. No one has contacted me about uh, about possible. Purchase, sales or whatever. I'm here to say, we're all ears. I don't care, whoever shows up with a bushel basket of money first is the winner. So uh, and I would love, my my wife and I. Have talked about it, we would love for homeowners to to own that. It it's, it's the spirit that we did it. We did, I. We just did this by our seat of our pants, you know, all for all of those years. We ran the course. On virtually no money and and uh, and just did it by volunteers and and all of that, so. We're, we're here to talk and we're, we're good with whatever people come up with, you know, this is the. Nice little neighborhood and we'll make it work uh, somewhere or another. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you, Mary. That certainly answers my question and may have clarified for others. And I appreciate all that you have given to the area and to the course and helping people.
Good evening, I'm Gary Friedenbach, five two zero Fontanel Court, Bellevue. Uh, and I am a partner in Lot Six, Seven, Eight, Nine. And I talked with one of my partners earlier and uh, we're ready to, as Jim did said, move forward. Uh, it all got started late, that's the only problem, there's seems to be a. the only problem. There's, seems to be, they want to delay it. I, we don't care if it's delayed, or we don't care if it isn't. We want to sell. And now, just today, I had a good conversation with one of the homeowners that's trying to put a deal together on another part of those lots. So we're ready. We're ready anytime anyone else is. So I don't know if the delay is going to affect anything for you guys. I, I would yield to you guys. I don't know. You tell me. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Is there, the public hearing's still open, so is there anybody else that hasn't spoken that would like to say anything? Okay, seeing nobody else? You coming? Okay.
Hello, thank you for your time. Erin Nebius. I live at five-twelve Ridgewood Drive. My husband and I bought that house in twenty fifteen, and that was a big basis of the appeal of that property. We two paid far above asking price to land that. And we're just really excited about the nature, the open space, the wildlife. It's a beautiful neighborhood, and we do really appreciate everything they've done to keep it that way, keep it nice. Now I have two small children who also really enjoy the nature, the deer, the, the turkeys. And, and it's not even just the golf course. I mean, I, I get that that's where a lot of them hang out, but I feel like developing on that area is going to impact the wildlife. It's going to impact the trees, the forest. All that stuff we really enjoy. I think the LLC, the efforts that some of the neighbors are making to come together to purchase it, I am all for that. I would like to be a part of that. And I understand they're only required to give us ten days' notice, but it, I mean, it really did kind of come up very quickly. And it was pushed through the planning committee very quickly. And I do feel like, had we been given more time to come together, I mean, this great idea was just presented to all of us a week ago, you know? And I think the longer we have, the more people we can get on board in the neighborhood to contribute to that. So though delaying this might not affect, I know the owners want to sell and they have a right to do that, we're just asking for more time because this was just presented as an option, you know? And, and like Betsy said, the, instead of taking the least bad option, we have a better one now that we can put together if we're given a little more time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak? Please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak regarding twelve A, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Is there any other questions or comments from the council? So I just want to recap one thing that I heard, and that's, for the LLC, they wanted to have a little bit more time. I think they have that. I think we've got two weeks before this is read and approved, if it gets approved. And then the final plat is probably another thirty days beyond that, forty-five?
At this point, the earliest the final plat could go, if it was submitted within the next couple of weeks, the earliest it would go would be heard at the July twenty-eighth Planning Commission meeting, which would put it on August sixteenth, city council. That's the quickest it could happen.
So before it hits the market, you got till like August, sorry, twenty, sixteen? So that's, I think that's your time. For us to delay that, you know, we're talking September, October, which I think it's a little unfair, having a year or two in this business. I think it's a little unfair to tell the sellers they have to wait till fall to sell their property when, 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 you know, it's a better time right now. So anyway, just my thoughts.
Question. And, and can't they even write an offer right now, contingent upon the plat being approved, contingent upon getting financing, contingent upon getting the LLC put together? I mean, there's a lot of ways you can do this to lock this down so that it does become yours as you work, as you work through the process and the Hawkins team works through the whole process.
Yep, you can start negotiating right now. Don't need an LLC, just an idea, and I, I'm sure they'll work with you. They just want to get out from underneath it and have somebody take care of it. The zoning, I, if I was living in the subdivision, I want the zoning changed tonight. I mean, the RE does not hurt you. It, it actually helps you. And if you want, if you were just one person, say you couldn't put an LLC together to buy the whole two acres, nine acres, whatever the lot size is, an owner that backs up to that property can buy that whole parcel, take off what they want, and then put it back in on the market. There's nothing wrong with that, would there be? You'd have to buy the whole lot.
You'd have to buy the whole lot. At this point, if the, if the plat is approved, then there'll be the new property lines. So I think either you'd have to have an LLC to have the joint ownership, or else it would have to be further subdivided.
But you could buy the whole lot, have it divided, and then sell off the other three acres as RE property, if the coun, if the council approves it.
Correct, if the council approved it.
Which I think they would. But don't hold me to that. Okay, so moving on to twelve A, oh, I'm sorry. So the third reading on twelve A will be June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, at six PM here in the council chambers. Twelve A one, request to preliminary plat lots one through nine, Fontanelles Estates. No action required there. So moves us on to thirteen, and thank you all for coming out, and thank you for all the great ideas. And I'm sure you'll get something adequate worked out. Thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, thirteen A, ordinance number four-one-zero-one, and ordinance approving the sale and conveyance of city property to Eastern Nebraska Community Action Plan, and authorize mayor to sign. Susan, or Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-one-zero-one, an ordinance to approve the sale and conveyance of one parcel of city property to Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership and CAP, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, at six PM. Item thirteen B, ordinance number four-one-zero-two, request to rezone the irregular northeasterly part of tax lots fourteen A and fourteen B, located in the northwest quarter of section twenty-three, township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG to BG for the purpose of commercial development. Applicant city of Bellevue, general location, highway seventy-five and highway thirty-four. Shirley, would you read that ordinance, please?
Yes, ordinance number four-one-zero-two, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number three-six-one-nine, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about highway seventy-five and highway thirty-four, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance, and to provide for an effective date.
Thank you. That second reading and public hearing will be June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, at six PM. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, fourteen A, recommendation to approve an event application for Kevin Power to host his eighth annual private charity event to raise donations for the Bellevue Food Pantry at his home, one-oh-eight Meadow Fox Court, on Saturday, July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, from seven PM to eleven PM, with live music and to waive the fifty-dollar event fee. And I will open up fourteen A for public hearing. If there's anyone here wanting to speak regarding fourteen A, please come forward. Anybody regarding fourteen A, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve an event application for Kevin Power to host his eighth annual private charity event to raise donations for the Bellevue Food Pantry at his home, one-oh-eight Meadow Fox Court, on Saturday, July twenty-third, twenty-two, from seven PM to eleven PM with live music and to waive the fifty-dollar event fee.
I'll second it.
Motion by Burn, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item fifteen, we have no resolutions this evening. Sixteen, current business, sixteen A, approve and authorize the city council president to sign the amendment extending the community development block grant, sub recipient agreement with MRH Land LLC in an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. And I'm going to recuse myself for conflict of interest. Turn it over to council president Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the record, it's seven nineteen. The mayor is leaving the council chambers. Do I have a motion? Councilman, Councilwoman Welch, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen A.
Second.
Got a motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Is there any discussion, questions? Here and then, please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
That was quick.
Thank you. Sixteen B, request to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Hana Kealan Associates PC for the Affordable Housing Action Plan in an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen B.
Second.
Motion by Burn, second by Prester. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Sixteen C, recommend approval of renewal of the Revised School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding with Omaha Public Schools, and authorize the mayor to sign. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion that we approve item sixteen C.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item sixteen D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign change order number one with royalty roofing and renovation for roof decking and removal of pergola over flat roof section and wrapping exposed wood on roof line to the Bellevue Professional Building at two-two-zero-six Longo Drive for additional work not to exceed sixteen thousand fifty-five dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve sixteen D.
I'll second that.
Motion by Welch, or motion by Cook, second by Welch. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Sixteen E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Civic and Community Center Financing Fund to accept grant funds for renovations to the Bellevue Professional Building, twenty-two-o-six Longo Drive, in the amount of four-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and thirty cents, plus an additional hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars recently awarded, for a total amount of six-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and thirty cents. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a motion that we approve sixteen E, and then I have a comment.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Councilwoman Welch?
And isn't this due, Mr. Risto, isn't this grant due to Mr. Clark, Doug Clark and his department, working on getting this grant, so it's not costing the taxpayers money for this renovation?
Correct, that's a state grant. And actually, the first one, the four-hundred-and-forty-three was the first round. The state came back, the second amount, another project had pulled out, so they reallocated that additional hundred-and-sixty to us. So it's kudos to Doug. They did a great job on pulling this together for us.
He's not here for me to thank him, so please extend my thanks to him.
Thank Tracy. He'll take it back to him. All right, any other questions, comments? Motion by Welch, second by McCaw, to approve sixteen E. Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the master service agreement with Metro Community College effective May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two through July first, two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Cook, Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion. We approve sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item sixteen G, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Memorandum of Understanding with the Bellevue Professional Management Association, effective October first, two thousand and twenty-one, to September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns? Hold on a second. Yes, probably should be. So is that date, can somebody answer that, effective October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one or twenty-two? It's twenty-one. There was a position that was reinstated, so it's just modifying that, so. Good, thank you. So it's correct. And motion by Burns?
I move to approve item sixteen G.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burn, second by Welch. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports. Comments must be limited to the items on the current reports. Monthly reports are given at the first council meeting of each month. May report is attached. And I'll start on that report. It mentions the process of filling the vacant councilman's seat. The process is that the mayor appoints somebody to replace that position for the current term, which would take it through the November fourth, or whatever the date is of that election. And then they're going forward, it has to be somebody that's actually running for that seat. So they have to either run by petition, so they have to go out and get ten percent of the total amount of votes in the last presidential election, which I think is going to be somewhere around four hundred signatures to get their name on the ballot. And I forget that date, September one. So they have to provide that to the election office, or they can run a write-in campaign, which they just have to sign up at the election office that says I want to run a write-in campaign. And they've got until October twenty-eighth to sign up at the election office, and then people just have to write their name in. So, I mean, I would suggest if you're going to do it, you want to go out and get the petition, so your name is on the ballot. But we do have a couple of people that have shown interest. I know I've passed those names out to the council members, asked them to research them and get back to me with any comments. We did do a press release, so I, I don't know if we'll get any more names. But if we do, we'll add them, and I'll pass those out to you as well, and just get back to me with any comments. We do have to have that filled within forty-five days of the vacancy. So my goal is to try to have a name by the end of this coming weekend. And then we'll have that person on for confirmation at the next meeting, so.
So the mayor appoints and the council approves, is that-
Mayor appoints, council approves to finish out the seat through November, but then it's, it's a whole new election beyond that. And Bob's name has also been removed from the ballot. That has, that's a requirement that has been requested of the election commissioner.
I'll just jump in. If anybody wants to do the petition, I would just encourage them to reach out to the Sarpy County Election Commissioner. They have the petition information. They would be the ones that would calculate the exact number of petition signatures that would be required. So I would contact them sooner than later, because that deadline to get everything submitted is September first.
And those petition signatures have to be registered voters, correct?
Have to be registered voters in Ward Two, and they have to have ten percent of the registered voters that voted in the last presidential election. That's the number that they have to have.
And you want to address the, which ward we're talking about, because we're changing wards in November?
So our wards are actually already effective and changed. So if you go to the Bellevue City website under city council, and you click on the ward map, it was also identified in our press release, that's the ward map. You have to live within Ward Two in order to be able to submit your name. And those would be effective with the last redistricting that the city council did in December. So those maps are available online. If anybody needs them, they can always reach out to me. I can get them as well.
And with a quick check, the two names that you have in front of you, I believe, were in both wards, so those names probably don't, there's no question on those whatsoever. All right, any other questions or comments on the administration reports?
I, thank you, Mayor. Bri, I just- Thank you, Mayor. Bree, I just got one more question about the subject we were just talking about. You talked about someone, if anybody wants to run for it, even as a write-in, you still gotta go to the Sarpy County Election Office, right?
Yes, even a writing candidate has to do an affidavit, um, with the election commissioner and that has to be submitted to them by October twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-two. So you can't just write in anybody's name. They actually have to go through and do the affidavit with the, the Sarpy County Election Commissioner.
Thank you.
Bree, I'm sorry. So do they have to pay an election fee to the city clerk's office?
Yes, under either option, that's a great question, Shirley. Under either option, the write-in affidavit or the petition, they still have to pay the fee like a normal candidate would do, um, and that would go through the city clerk's office.
Thank you.
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I would just add, that's the first step. You might wanna check with the election commissioner, but you have to get the receipt from Bellevue from the city clerk that then take to the election commissioner. If you go to the election commissioner, ready to petition on, you, they're gonna send you back to the city clerk. So that's an important component. Check it out, do your homework, call us, ask, but we wanna see somebody, some folks filing and being on the ballot. That's the best way, letting the voters make the choice.
So, Mr. Mayor, if someone is appointed to the position and then both candidates or both candidates that are proposed at this moment could both go out and get petitions signed and both be on the election in November. And that date is November eighth, so.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, anybody, whether, whether somebody's appointed right now by the mayor or not, anybody in Ward Two can do a petition. So you could potentially have five people on the ballot if all of them are successful in their petition.
I guess if you have somebody in mind, uh, you reach out to them as well. I mean, I know there wasn't a lot of people run in this last campaign, so it doesn't hurt to reach out. Um, it'd be nice whoever got appointed that they would commit to running for four years, I guess. At least you know they're serious. Any other questions? Okay, all, no closed session? Oops, sorry.
Before, sorry, Mayor. Uh, we got a big function this weekend. Jim, I, you probably know a lot more about it than me. Probably could better speak to it.
Is there something going on? If, uh, so this weekend is, uh, Bellevue rocks the riverfront and this is the second year the Bellevue Community Foundation is um, hosting and sponsoring it, along with a lot of great community sponsors. Looking for a great weekend. So we open up Thursday night at five, uh, actually at four. Um, we have live music both Thursday, Friday and Saturday. Thursday night are the Blue Zed Bands that come out of Bellevue East and Bellevue West and then Heartland American Band out of Offutt. And then Friday and Saturday, I think we have ZZ Three and Purple Rain, so you'll have the rock side and then Warren. So I was naming him, I was naming him Warren Moon today. I don't know why. Sawyer Brown is Saturday night, uh, along with Lemon Fresh Day, which is a local favorite. If you have not been past American Heroes Park, you can't get into it till Thursday, but go down and look at the size of this carnival. It's like five times greater than what we've ever had down there. So if you've ever seen the movie Jaws where he turns around and goes, I think we need a bigger boat, I think we need a bigger park. So this event is stacking up to be a really great community event. And, um, I think just some of the feedback that we've seen is, I think we're gonna have outstanding attendance and we, we encourage all the community to come out. It's a great community event.
And isn't Thursday night family night?
Family night, so the carnival rides are discounted for Thursday night. I think the bands are twenty-four ninety-five. Don't hold me to this. Then Friday and Saturday are thirty-four ninety-five, but I think they have close to thirty rides that they have out there. Um, there's one that I think we're gonna try to get the mayor on. It's called the O M G.
Sure, I'm beyond the weight capacity limits.
I'm hoping it's him and not me, but one of us will expire if we, uh, we get on that one, but.
Paul, you better be ready in case he gets him on that ride.
So a lot of good, we got a lot of good vendors down there, a lot of good food. So, um, make plans to come out and enjoy one night along with the rest of the community. So big event. Oh, fireworks Saturday night, too.
Uh, big fireworks show, so we've had some big ones down there. A shout out for Jim too, sharing him a little bit, uh, for his expertise. He's run this thing for years and, uh, he knows what he's doing and doing a great job, so. And all of our sponsors, I won't list them all because I'll miss them, I'll miss some, but, uh, just great, great job by everybody and I hope to see you out there this weekend.
A lot of great staff working at this, so.
Any other questions? Okay, there's no closed session, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Welch, second by Cook. Please vote.
All, all in favor, motion carried.